Can y'all hear me? Yes, can I get a thumbs up?
Yes, you can hear me.
Perfection. Um, again, my name is Kiana Huff, I'm a full CC organizer for Black Youth Institute. Thank you so much for coming to our third community town. So hopefully you guys are excited. Uh, basically what we're gonna do tonight is kinda get you guys into your imagination, get you ready and um active for building a community leadership, okay? So, uh, I want you to, uh, introduce to our steering committee member. Uh, this is Tyra, the lovely Tyra.
Peace family. Hey y'all, hey y'all, hey. I'm Tyra, I am a steering committee, I'm on the steering committee for the full co-op, so I'm just overwhelmed, I'm really like this person that's all the way up here, so I'm really trying hard to just stay calm and level because I've been working on that, so I can just get through here um the right way, so it's just really good to see everybody faces, peace coaches up. So I just wanna welcome everybody. And before we start, I just wanna take a moment to just round the energy in the room, everybody looks good, everybody energy looks like it's one hundred thousand. Y'all in the online community, y'all seem good. Feeling good, three there, okay, so I just wanna have a moment to round the energy, so just take a moment to just, um, be calm, right? Just be peaceful, nothing serious, just take a moment, take a couple of deep breaths, right? Identify that intimate relationship that you have with your creator, with your source, right? And just take a moment to be, um, thankful, right? And the intentions we wanna set for today is community, build a community, build a strong community, build in foundations that is going to serve, um, Cherry Hill, start in Cherry Hill, um, and spread throughout Baltimore City, right? Uh, we wanna build a network, we wanna build, um, we wanna mesh communities also, so we wanted to take this moment to just give thanks. And welcome you all in, and moving forward, uh, before we get started, I would like to take this chance to go around the room and ask everybody to describe in one word, describe yourself on a team, okay? And we'll, we'll filter in the online community as we go along. So, um, myself, El- Elder, Mama Daddy, so just one word, um, when you think of yourself on a team, right, what would describe you?
Fabulous.
Fabulous. Okay, wait, I'm sorry, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'll, can I pause right there? Before we start, introduce yourself, I apologize, so just say your name, um, quickly, um.
Daddy thanks.
And your word, your description, your edge, there we go.
Stephanie Bliss and my word is, uh, connection.
Thank you folks, Councilwoman Porter is community liaison, my word is engaged.
Engaged, right.
George, I'm the community school coordinator with the store at Cherry Hill, I'm in your middle school, and my word would be, uh, dreamers.
Uh, I'm Augusta Christensen, I'm a state delegate candidate, and my word on the team would be motivating.
Right.
Uh, my name's Eric, and, uh, my word would be ideas.
Oh.
I'm Danny Black, and my word would be flexible.
My name's Kaya, and my word would be action.
Nice.
Uh, my name is Brian, my word would be marvelous.
Marvelous?
Yes.
Marvelous, fabulous, marvelous, I like how we, okay. Connected, connected. Hi, you good? Thank you. So just your name and, um, one word that will describe yourself.
Um. My name is Natalie.
I would like for you to know. I would, thank you.
Uh, Brother Eric, on the team.
Leader? Okay. Um, Tyra, again, my word would be reliable. And.
Um, my name is Kiana, and my word would be understanding.
Nice. Okay, Brother Eric would like to, uh, reneg, uh, as an insider, no change here. Whatever the hell, okay. Go ahead, omnipresent.
It's a provider.
I like that. I like the, all of those. Alright, thank you guys. Um, I would like permission to use those words from everybody in the room, is it okay? I don't know where we're gonna use them at, but if it's permission, it'll be great, I'll let you guys know in the future. Alright, so now we're just gonna introduce the steering committee, um. I would like to introduce our new full CC organizer, Kiana Huff. Yeah. Kiana Huff, uh, new to the full, she's not new to the community, but she's new in her role and her position as full CC organizer, and she's on an amazing job with the process and transition, and we are supporting Kiana, I'm supporting Kiana, um, with through everything, and I would like for you all to give Kiana grace and give Kiana support as well, as she is entering and she's killing this new position. Alright, so I want you to introduce the steering committee and just let the people know what the steering committee is.
So basically, steering committee are the directors of how, how you want the, um, Cherry Hill Food Co-op to operate. So that's the idea, so, um, once we, they'll be transitioning into the board, but we have governance, we have research and communication, which is one team, so, we let that go. Governance is basically how we act, you know, like the government, right? So, that's what governance is, we have outreach and communication, so outreach is how we get the message out, who we talk to. Then, we have finance, we know what finance is, right? How we gonna get the money, how we gonna spend the money, sorry guys, how we gonna spend the money, and also you should know that, we about community, so that's why my babies are here. Because we want the kids to be a part of the movement. Okay, and then we have external relations, which is based on the messaging and how we get it out to the community. So, that's like a short version of it, um, and then ask you guys to answer any questions. So my role is essentially coordinating. So I make sure everything is together, pull our parts together, and I make the connections. So, short and sweet, but anybody have any questions right now, but? Um, so all the commi- all the community, um, steering committee members are not here, but we have Eric, who is also on the steering committee. We have Tyra, we also have Annika, we have Tajee, we have Eris, Eris actually could be back downstairs, came in. Um, she was at the door, and she is right there. So we're actually, uh, looking for these steering committee members to be a part of this process. Um, and we're really, really excited, so I've been reaching out to some folk and have to follow up, but if you're interested in that, please put it on the sign sheet, um, because it will be really, really helpful. Um, so just wanted to put that message out there, and we're really excited about tonight, because we're really one of the things that I want people to understand about a full co-op, the difference between a full co-op like a market, when you think about your community, has shoppers ever asked you what you want in your school? Like, hmm, or giant ever come to you and say, you know what, we really like this community, just give you all your IDs, ever? No. Okay, so, the whole, the difference between a full co-op and just your regular supermarket, is that difference. We really care about the community, we want you to be a part, this is a chance for you to actually make some money, to learn some things, and bring community in. We also care about the nutrition, the wellness, and not just the money, oh, however, it is a business, right? So we do understand that, but we also know that community is more important than just business. So, that's just the short and sweet version, um, of what we're doing, where we at, and because it's not a simple way, it's come, come into a community, see uh, what the economic status is, the demographics and just kinda putting it there, um.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, so I'ma back up, but I'ma finish this one little statement, because I actually forgot about the virtual space, we didn't even ask them how they find this human, but they need. So I do apologize, I'm a little slow on the virtual space.
Oh no, I apologize.
So, um, can you guys give me one word, your name, and then you could shout a pop point it to anybody on the virtual space. Um, I would say Lori, if you're ready to, um, give your word and say.
Yeah, hi, I'm usually the communicator on a team.
Communicator?
My name is Moscow, or the U, and my word is loyal.
Loyal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's Frances, um, and my word would be supportive.
Supportive. I'm here. Um, your word and your name.
My name is Eris, guys. Employee of Black U and also steering committee member, and my word is going to be intentional.
Intentional.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have, what's her name, Denise?
Hi.
Or just, uh, maybe lady, is there one word that describes you? Okay, so we got loyal folks, two, and two. Supportive.
We need all y'all, especially the loyal and supportive, thanks for being times two on the table.
So, um, thank you Eric for reminding me, because the virtual space is a little off in my head, I, I miss people, I miss the connection with people, so um, forgive me online, uh, virtual space, and just be mindful, just let me know, let us know. Um, so okay, so right now what we're gonna do is, we're gonna show a video about what the Cherry Hill Food Co-op is. Um, it's about two minutes, so just want you to just kinda take a look at it, and, um, okay. Yes, so.
Cherry Hill Food Co-op is a lot of people, important people, for the purpose of, um, building community wealth, and making sure that our food needs are met.
The Food Co-op to me is going to be a place where black people who are from Cherry Hill can define what it means to be free and to have access to food.
Essentially, for me, it looks like an intergenerational one, where people are shopping in the grocery store, grow, grow up there and end up come, come in, uh, member of owners there. Bringing healthy, affordable, cultural foods inside of the community, um, and teaching why they're there, teaching why we have to, uh, price them at, we price that, you know, I mean, giving folks the political education of what it means to, to operate your own grocery store and to be able to, um, control your own food, the whole soft vegetables that are very, very, very discounted prices to the ones in Cherry Hill, and they have grown, um, spectacular. And why I prioritize the wellness of the community. What are we eating, what are we thinking about our work? And how we making sure that we're creating opportunities for community to really stand on just what we want, um, it's self determination, um, it's healing work. I wanna, um, I wanna take a deep breath.
To me, it's all of this access to land, access to housing, access to food, they're all related, in that they are the things that we need in order to be healthy and well and thrive, instead of just survive, and the things that are systematically taken away, and so for me, anything that is getting black access to that, um, instead of prioritizing folks who haven't had access to these things for many generations, is, um, an important part of the recipe for exploration.
I see the co-op being, um, kind of like, not just an example, but a structure, right, but something for folks to study, something for folks to learn from, and be able to repeat, uh, and redo in their own communities. To, to have people say what we need, say, and build what we wanna see in the world. Black people building a grocery store is black action.
Okay, so that was our, um, video, so those who are some of steering committee members, and mainly community members and people that are impacted by food and impacted that's a part of the community or impacted, um, by the community, so there was just their ideas and their thoughts, ideologies on what the full co-op meant to them, and how it is, um, impacted.
Yeah, so that was just a little something, just a little taste of what we're doing and the importance of this work. Um, so one of the things I want us to get back to, sometimes as adults, we lose our imagination. So a part of this whole cooperative is really the community thinking about how we set, how we want our food to look, and specifically the food program. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go out in a few minutes and get some, some items here that says, is a saying that says imagination is more important than knowledge. So what I want you to do is kinda go back to the elementary days, when you just had all these ideas, you had all this energy, and you just wanted to build whatever you wanted, there was no interruption, there was no context of what it had to be, and you felt free, right? We want us to have that same imagination when it comes to building this food program, okay? So, the activity is, imagine a community, you just moved there, right? You got, you got with the stakeholders, the residents, and yourself, and you say, we're gonna build this community, we're gonna build this food program. What you're gonna do is, I just gotta out here and build it, with no structure, so it's blocks, you can take as many blocks as you want, you can bring the whole bag in. Okay, so we can have four people to a group. Yep, so, um. If you guys comfortable with just splitting in, in the middle? Well, I kinda want, I kinda feel like y'all know each other. So what, what I think it might be easier is if we just count from one to four. And then you break out in those groups, and then while y'all doing the counting, y'all can separate, get the items, I'ma talk to the online community, um, so that they know. So one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four.
Cause it's twelve, it's gonna be four, it's twelve. And my, my mask is off.
Black secrets, right?
Is it just two? Two is fine, okay, two is fine, my bad, give me y'all.
Four.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four. One.
Two.
Okay.
Three, four.
And so, maybe, maybe that's what we need. It's my mind, I'm right, almost. And then that would just be what? Alright, y'all, it's gonna be three groups, and I, if y'all know each other, don't be rich. My mind is all.
Well, you don't want me to be the nobody.
I keep telling, I keep telling. This is just, this is probably, so that's just gonna be four groups, but it just be for three groups, thanks to me. So three, it'd be four people and three groups, okay? So I probably should've just been one, two, but yeah, that's what we're doing, everybody understand this assignment, sorry, I confused y'all. Okay, we gonna do it again, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, six, one, two, three, one. Easy.
Two.
Two, three, three, two, three.
All the words goes in here.
Okay. Alright, so the ones, the ones in groups right here, Mama Daddy.
All the ones over here, please. And we gonna open it up.
Right over here, near the podcast.
Thank you.
That's all.
Three's over here.
Only that one.
Are you three?
Yeah.
Three, yeah, three, no, we're hanging out there. There's three again, it's just me.
Alright, y'all, uh, hope all is well, real quick, I think I'm gonna just, uh, close the breakout groups. Because it's just, it just, um, it's not, you know, so many of us, and so um, however, if you all can open up the Jamboard link here, uh, in the chat, if you open the chat, uh, I can help you go through that and kinda walk through that. If you need any help, just let me know. Um, but I see Eris is here. And if folks need the link again, I'm, I'm gonna put it in the, in the chat again. Okay, thank you Lori. We'll, we'll spend a little time. But let's give it about three minutes and then we'll go there, um, I, I didn't get the name of brother in, uh, it says Jesus the Christ Ministries, what's your name again, good brother? My name is, my name is Moscow Johnson, M-O-S-C-O-E, Moscow Johnson. Brother Moscow, are you able to, uh, click on the link for the Jamboard? I, I, I don't, I don't, let's see here, where would I find the Jamboard? So it's in the chat, if you go, open up the chat, just click the link, um. Up the chat, hold on just a minute, where it says chat with everyone? So you'll see if, you're on the computer? I see a link for Jamboard, Google, da, 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 da. There you go, yep, can you click that? And then Lori, are you in the, uh, are you in already? I see it says in the anonymous elephant, I think with you, I'm assuming that's you. Lori, are you in?
Yeah, I'm in.
Brother Moscow, are you, uh, are you? Yes sir, I'm in. Yeah, I see you in, okay, cool, so everybody in, can you see me, uh, moving the cursor like this? Can you see me moving it around? Uh. By the green print? So. We gone. So to, on the Jamboard, on the left, you see a panel. Underneath the, uh, highlighted, uh, click, clicker, and in between that and what looks like mountains, you'll see it says sticky note, you wanna click that, you can choose whatever color you want, and using whatever words you want to be a part of this community and grocery store, and just, you know, add, if, you know, add that as well. So you just click it, type what you want, and then press save, and then it'll, it'll go up, so I'll just say, uh, example, save, and you'll see it here, and then I just want you to like, you know, put it somewhere where everybody can see it. Alright, see?
Yeah, I, oh, okay. I'm doing this on my phone, and I, I just got a square where I can write something in, but I don't see any controls, so I'll do my best, I'll do my best.
Let me check on my phone, I'm, I, I haven't used it from the phone, but I will, uh, let me try my best to learn, so that I can let you know. If you find out before me, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you all for, for your patience.
Well, I can kind of, I can talk through it, like.
Sure, that's fine, and then you talk through it.
Okay, yeah.
I'll type it in, well, so you see the prompt, right?
Yeah, I think we need growers.
Growers. Alright, just keep it coming. You see it come up?
Yeah, got it.
Ooh, what else you feel like we need?
Buyers. If we're going to be carrying other stuff than local farm goods.
You said buyers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like if we were gonna buy bulk foods, or something like that.
Sure, Brother Moscow, are you, are you, uh, able to write in, or would you like to talk in, and I'm cool with that, I can scribe for everyone. I'm doing pretty good right now, I'm just getting acclimated to this, so just keep on moving, and if I see anything, I'll chime in. Can you hear me? Can you all still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, managers, like, for the bu- the business part.
You said, what was that?
Managers.
Managers. Yeah.
Drivers, maybe?
Drivers.
Yeah.
What else?
Well, you wanna put your steering committee in there too.
We do need folks who are, you know, working on it more, you know, primarily, that's a good point. Maybe you might want to, um, a pricing committee, or I mean, you're going to sell these at some point, right? Right. So you need to come up with a price list perhaps of the various items that would be available in the co-op. Yep. What else, think about a grocery store, what else you want to, you know, you think we should have as a part of this? And also, I want y'all to, I wanna challenge us as a group to think about what the actual physical space might look like as well. I mean, I like to add the people, and I wanna do that too, but I also wanna kinda think about that as well. I mean, I like to add the people and I wanna do that too, but I also wanna kind of think about that as well.
So this is just dreaming, right?
Yeah.
Like, what, 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 what would be offered? Um, so, um. Obviously Whole Foods.
Sure. And in this case, you mean Whole Foods versus like processed foods? Not like Whole Foods, the store, right?
Yes, yes.
I know. I, I think I know that. I just wanted.
Okay.
Yeah. Whole Foods. Actually, if you don't mind, I'm gonna say over processed foods. If you understand.
Also, other, other local groceries, handmade goods.
Yeah.
Like. For example, Filbert, Filbert Street Garden has its own honey.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Or what other products? I like, I like where, where we're going here. What other maybe local products that we might wanna consider? Yeah, local or, you know, hyperlocal, local. And at least for us, what we also wanna do is prioritize black as well, even if that means like buying from somebody in. Virginia or North Carolina or something like that, but keep that in mind also. At least that's what we wanna do, but also we're dreaming. And if y'all, I'd like to be a part of that dream too.
Um, fresh seasonal flowers, local flowers.
I like that. Actually, I'm gonna write this here. I'm gonna write Filbert Street. What else? Any other products come to mind that you're like, all right, open, boom, I want this?
Locally made, um, soaps, toiletries. Cleaning products.
What about what it looks like? We can return to.
Oh, okay.
What about what it looks like? I'm gonna put those in blue. Um, I'm putting in pink. I like pink. Uh.
Okay. Me too.
What about, um. What about, what do you think it would look like? I mean, it says that we got about fifteen seconds left.
Um, mi- um, I, I, I would say placement, like. Make it somewhere central.
Yeah. Just speak from location. Ooh, any colors come to mind for y'all?
Does Cherry Hill have any colors?
I, I mean. Not necessarily, but I'm not gonna lie. If I had to choose colors, I'm gonna go with red, I'm gonna go with black, and I'm gonna go with green.
I thought, I thought, I don't, I don't know you, but I thought you would.
Okay.
Thought I would say that. But I mean, that's me. Uh, but I mean, do you all have any thoughts?
That's fine by me.
I, I really personally like, you know, having art be a part of the fiscal space.
We are done on this side, guys.
All right, so we all done? So you just gonna do us like that? Okay, cool. All right, well, it was, it was, uh, it was great, uh.
If you can add on one more, like, um, um.
Physical attribute?
Like, um. Farm products, like seasonal farm products.
Okay.
Out, outside, like. Like to catch the eye.
I, I, I heard you. I don't have no problem. I'm, I'm done now.
Okay. Cool.
Uh, I just got called in, so.
Okay.
This was great, y'all. Appreciate y'all very much. I'm gonna, uh, go back over to the other spot. All right.
All right, so basically what we wanna do is, we're gonna talk about your process, talking about what you, what you guys had to do to kind of work together. Talk about, give us a little bit about your actual building, what that looked like. And we're gonna explain then, uh, we're gonna just hear everybody's thoughts. So maybe about. I guess two or three minutes, um, pardon me, to just kind of talk about your process and everything. So anybody can go, that's slow.
It's fabulous, baby.
Well, we got our kids together, um, our parents together, real quick about the shopping center. And the community. And this is built and designed like the shopping center there, the school of, um. Cherry Elementary Middle School and our biggest church. So here's our grocery store. We have a handicap accessibility, handicap accessibility. Um, in the parking lot, we have a fireman, we have a young lady here that's going to shop for everybody, because they have the food for. There's different signs here, the cash here there. Then we have the houses brought around Cherry Hill. Imagine a three, three hundred acres of land, but it's just imagination. And we have our parking sign, our houses, um, our church. Our church, our school.
Toy store.
Toy store.
Restaurant.
Restaurant.
Gas station.
And a gas station. So we keeping our money inside our community. Uh, everything is here. And that's going through the highway. And the highway people is coming here to participate in our activity. So, did I miss anything?
Oh, even the fireman is shopping.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I love the shopping. Thank you so much for sharing. Okay, one, I, can I, I wanna distinguish the, um, the co-ops. Y'all have a name? Can I? We can come back while you're. Yeah, or just for, I just wanna write it down. Cherry Hill.
Oh, Cherry Hill's best.
Somebody's starting trouble already. I'm not pointing no elbow.
I love you. What we shot?
Oh, now you don't want to jump tall, jump over. Third call, bad call.
Um, this is three. We don't know them yet. We've been learning who they are, so we'll come over here. All right.
So our strategy was to just fill the entire bag with his mighty resources. So we, we really have a cluster of.
We have a, um, a house right here. And we have a. A mailbox, not a mailbox, something.
Office.
Post office. Uh, um, like. From groceries, like a grocery store here.
Okay.
Um, a hospital.
Oh, great.
And you have a. Um, for like, for taking a trash.
Oh, like waste management? Yeah.
Walking area.
Okay.
We have a. With a playground. And we have, have a museum.
Okay.
It's like, Uncle. And this is a. Um, it exists.
And then we have, um, this is like a spiritual, uh, this is a spiritual center, and then this was a garden.
Okay.
Um, and then in the, we centered it around a fountain with green space. So that was kind of, we started with the green space and then we. Built the things around it. Leaving housing kind of on the.
It looks like the house was created with. Like a wall.
Yeah, okay.
I was wondering that they did, we asked people if they needed any additional resources.
So.
So, um, yeah, we had a lot of resources.
Oh, you got storing resources?
Yeah, we have a.
Like, you guys, are like, are you like a hub resources?
But we have, we have a lot of. We have more than we.
Okay.
They leading with the spirit of cooperation. That's what we need.
Oh. Do you guys have a, um, identity yet? Oh, wow. It looks, it looks bad, it's bad, but it's live.
Housing?
The housing?
Yes.
Housing, that's, that's the name?
Yes.
That's, that's what y'all gonna go with?
Yes, Cherry Hill.
Cherry Hill Housing?
Yes.
Right.
All right, so online community, you guys wanna go? It's okay if you don't wanna go yet. But don't be trying to add stuff to your board. Guys wanna go? Okay.
Uh, we kind of started with the outside. Have some, these pretty little marble things to do the little pathway, piece up to it. Okay, yeah. And we have a bunch of greenery trees and there's a little pond over here.
Oh.
Um, and then on the inside, the center, there's gonna be a large tree and around it, it's just gonna be open space. So. There can be tables for people to sit and versus each other, build community. Um, then we created a little, uh, children's area. While they're grocery shopping and have their kids hang out.
Where we also have a little computer lab. And then at the back of that, we can tell you, I know that we can park. So sometimes on the bound, so kind of. So, yeah.
And we have a little mini board.
There are booths.
Oh, right. We talk about that three hundred acres of land. And I helped build the planet.
Did you guys decide on the name?
Put it all up again.
Okay, so y'all, we found out grocery store name. It's called the Best Housing Collector. Okay, you guys ready on the virtual space? You guys want me to read it? Cause I can. You gonna read it? Okay.
I don't mind. You want to? All right, um, so, um. I worked with the online, uh, breakout group. We came up with three categories. We didn't have the luxury of blocks and all of that stuff. But we did have the, uh, privilege of imagination. So we utilized different colors to delineate the different things that we wanted to see. So yellow entails. What the type of people or the positions we would have there, growers, uh, steering committee, buyers, people to buy things, um. Uh, managers of the actual co-op and drivers and, um, some kind of committee. Uh, or mechanism to price what's there and what will be available. Um, and then in terms of, um, what would be in the space, you'll see that in the green. Uh, cleaning products, uh, local honey that's available from farms like Filbert Street Garden and others. Seasonal farm products that are aesthetically present, uh, pleasing on the outside, so that folks are, you know, tantalized to come inside. Um, locally made soaps, uh, seasonally available flowers, uh, locally made and other toiletries and, um. Other, you know, local groceries and handmade products, right? So things that might come from local sources. And we didn't say this here, but also, uh, I think it was expressed if by nobody else, uh. That they come from, uh, black sources too. And then, uh, in the pink, you'll see the singular thing, because we only had fifteen seconds left and you gave us less time than everybody else. Um. Yeah, I'm, I'm not salty at all. Uh, it's okay. Uh, I thought this was about equity, but. Because it's not, I'll present what we have. Uh, and we said that physically or what have you, that it would be in a central location. Somebody in the group said that there might be some red, black, and green stuff in there. And some, uh, like something that's visibly, visibly appealing, like art and, you know, Stevie Wonder and. People dancing in the aisles and, you know what I'm saying, doing the, doing the rerun dance. I mean, nobody said that I added that, but because we had more time, I took the luxury. Um, the rerun dancing too? Everybody? Okay, all right, cool. I've got practice, uh, stretch. But, um, anyway, uh, yeah, that's, that's what we got. Nobody, we didn't come up with a name. Does anybody online wanna come up with a name? I like that. One word, one word co-op.
One word, is what I'm going with?
I mean, I'm not saying that, I just, yeah.
Anybody said one word?
Looking for Mr. Lawyer, wake up.
I don't know, uh, maybe everybody took a bathroom break, I don't know.
Char Hill one word?
All of the community.
That's it. Power of the community.
Power though, power up.
Power up. You sitting there naming stuff, go ahead, go ahead.
Alright, perfection. So I just wanna give a hand clap to everybody. Let me tell you all the plan and this, this is like the best part for me, this is like the part that I was actually most excited about. Um, so the idea of it was really to bring all the parts together of what it is to build a food co-op. So I heard, um, out in the hallway, um, I'm not gonna say the name, anyone's names, but when they were out there, I was like, wait a minute. I was a little nervous because I thought all the resources were gonna be done. Right, it was like, I don't know, people getting stuff, they grabbing stuff, and then it's like, you know, you guys didn't know each other. You kinda coming together for this initiative, like, okay, we're gonna do this, everybody got their thoughts, you gotta collaborate. You gotta talk, you gotta get to know each other, and you gotta learn the process, you really didn't know what to do, so I really wanted it to be as general as possible. Because one of the ideas of building a cooperative, when you think about the Stern Community, although we may know each other, it was a time when we didn't. Right, and we still had to figure out a way to cooperate. We had to figure out a way to kinda compromise for the greater good. So that was really the purpose of this, and I wanted to share that reference to the Stern Committee, so if you're interested in being on the Stern Committee, that's some of the things you're gonna have to bring. Understanding that we all have our, the way we was raised, how we think, how we think the community is supposed to look. But the idea is this is for the greater good, and it's also legacy good. So one day, we may not be here, we wanna be able to leave something, cause it's about black land and food science. So, that's a really big. So that's a really big part of it, and the reason why I said that imagination is more important than knowledge, because we all have knowledge, right? But the imagination is really what's gonna get us, because right now, we're actually living in the future, right? So I wanted to make sure that we understand the importance of that. Yes. Um, the, the importance of that and what that really looks like in real time. Now, of course, you were building up a blocks, right? We haven't gotten there just yet, but that's the stage that we're in. We're at the stage of actually building it, either from the grown up or designing the store. So, I wanted you guys to kinda see what we kinda go through in our Stern Committee meetings. You know, cause we all got our thoughts, we might have a bad day, you know, we don't know what everybody is going, going through, but we knew the end result was kinda getting through them instructions and getting it done. There was a lot of talking going on, you know, and it might have been a little easier for this particular thing. But when you think about the long term for putting a cooperative together, the initiative started in twenty seventeen. Right, so now we're in twenty twenty-two, so if you think it's like, hey, that's a long time. But when you think about all those processes, these are blocks right here, but imagine start to finish, it takes time. So, that was the biggest thing that I kinda wanted to drill and hone into everyone. Um, another thing that kinda came out because of what we're doing and getting the message out, I didn't say this earlier, was the ambassador program, which was an initiative that came out of the Stern Committee. Our first ambassador is Ace. Very, very fitting. And, um, one of the things that came out when you think about collaboration, we wanna put people on who really are about volunteering, this is important. The Stern Committee is about volunteering, is being dedicated and is working together. So, on that note, we're gonna take like a five, seven minute break, kinda shake, shake a tail feather, whatever you wanna do, or play some music.
Well, I'm not taking, just playing no shake a tail feather music, I don't want nobody to break no hips.
Guys, shake some, so after that, we'll go into the, um, place that we're in right now, with, and just to get the thoughts of what the actual, um, co-op. Okay, any questions, any thoughts? Anything, anybody wanna say, could we take our break?
So when we were gathering the resources, um, and I think it's good to gather everything that you need, but one thing to be mindful is don't pour and take, you know? And I think that's one of the reasons why maybe this community might not have a market, because others have taken too much real thought.
That's real.
Which is why I asked, maybe to ask other people. And just because I believe in naming the health and the room, based off phenotypes, it's like, well, you got all these, you know what I mean? So it's like, what about the?
Any other thoughts? Okay, let's take our break. Thank you. Yes, Lawrence. You sound like, you're like, listen, all good music, you can come in the market, have the app, put your music request in, so like, not to have it at the gym, you can put your music request in. And you can just like shop and listen to the music of your choice. Yeah. Thank you. For. To. The. I'm. I'm. The. That. Be. Waiting. To. For. Session. That. To. After. People have. The. Then. I'll see her. I was in a state I still. Dirty. Really. If. Then. Yes. Very. Good. You. From. You. I. Will. My. It's. She. Is. Right. Right. God. Lord. Oh. Oh, what. Right. There. Oh. I. Well. If you. You. Yeah. Still. I want. Put. You. You. Yeah. Yeah. I've. Been. Using. Better. And. Oh. Yeah.
I've been chosen. But. I think. You're. Please.
And. Like. I'm. Wake up. Do. Oh, my. I. It's. They. You. Just. I'm. And. One. Oh. Please. Bye. They. I. Go. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. But. Yes. Here. And. Hi. I'm. Only. I'm. Know. You. You. Every day. Oh. Probably. I'm. So. You. The. The. They. Wow. So. You. Was. So. You. Don't have. So. Say. I'm. Then. I'm. What. Well. It's. It's. A. Cool. The. So. Every. Yeah. And.
You're.
Don't. Don't.
Okay. That. They don't.
We. That. From. The. It's. You. Sometimes. You know. I'm. What's the best. Thing. Only. Yeah. There's. A. She. Make it. It's. Yeah. Some. That. Always. I'm. This. Ah.
Okay. Good.
I said. Please. Take. Start. Awesome. How. Not. You're. Oh. Boy. You're. The. Ah. You. Bye. So. Better. Yeah.
I want. I'm. Down. So. You're. Both. She.
Talk. What. We. All. You. They. They. Oh. They have. I know that. Both. He. On. They. They. Feel. But. They. I. Look. To. People. But. I know. They. Do. That. I'm. Good. They. Go. Stop. Come back.
I think.
You. 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 Why. Long. People. And. Now. In. The. It's. In. I'll. But. So. We're. Going. And. So. Come. Bye. Oh. I'm. 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 So. I'm. Hey. I give you a call. That. That. So. Yeah. Oh. It's. Go. I'm. So. Next. Yes. He. Ah. On. Super. But. So. Oh. Yeah. It's. Ready. I'm.
Is.
They.
Yeah.
I.
Okay. What. Can. Yeah. He's. Look. I know.
I think. You're.
Hello. Where. On. Screen.
Yeah.
Oh. You.
It's. Long. Time. I think. Playlist. At.
It was. Like.
My. I'm. I'm. See. No. We. About. Yes. Yeah. So. And. Let's. On. I can see. But. Very. I'm. Very. Okay. I'm. Just. I'm. There. He. That's. Well. I'm. The. Oh. That's. That's. Yeah. It's. My. Not. Great. What. Not.
It's.
Okay. Listen. Fun. Tricky. I. I'm. You. We. Yes. I. I. Yeah. That. This. The. That. Like. That's. She. Yeah. You. That. You. What. Yeah. The. I'm. Okay. There. This. It's. I'm. Okay. Yeah. So. We. Can. Do. This. This. Would. You. No. No. You. Okay. That's. Or. One. Of. Yeah. Yeah. I. Have. That. Have. You. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. It's. A. So. Just. I'm. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. The. I. For. Yeah. You. Yeah. I. But. Yeah. It's. I. So. You. Jesus. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. I'm. That. I'm. And. He. You. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. You. I'm. I'm. It's. Now. We. We. Like. Don't. I'm. With. You. So. I'm. Need. Action. Okay, guys.
I know you tired, baby. Oh, you the water, baby. I eat tired. You just don't.
You say. We wore him. That's. This. Us.
He was trying to keep up with him.
Oh. No. Okay, so.
Everything. Yeah.
It's amazing, right?
It was.
I think we get one for the chef.
Yeah.
Hey. Do you want to introduce? I'm. So. I.
Yeah. Um. I'm. Working on building a kitchen in. The old Gaucho neighborhood. Um. With my business partner, Chef Pat. And we're. Um. Setting it up to be. Uh. Rentable by the hour to kind of help support. The smaller food businesses starting out. And eventually grow so big they grow out of our kitchen and start supplying the food co-op from Cherry Hill. Um.
Yeah.
So. Uh. We're set to open in June. Um. Yeah.
Name. What's your name?
Oh, it's called, um. It's. Oh, mine is Kai and it's called Our Time Kitchen.
And. What.
It's in Old Gaucho. It's. On Twenty Fourth Street between Howard and Maryland.
Um. Are you going to have to.
You know what? We are. That's a great question. We forgot how to go window. So. And. Um. You like the door that stops.
Oh.
So we're going to stop with any.
Oh.
Yeah.
No. Oh.
Okay, so at this time, we are going to just briefly talk about the overview of the grocery store model. And, um. Where we are. In the steps. To strategize and then building a grocery store, basically like where we are currently now. So. What have we done? Um. So. We have to pick up on. It's like, I'm just kidding. It just lets you guys know where we are in the process of building our grocery store. Um. Tiana.
Yeah.
And. Oh. All right. I just. I just said.
Yeah. Robert.
Right. Um. No disrespect to like. Uh. Like. Um. Yeah, so.
Wow.
Well.
You could have kept that one to yourself. Yeah, you could have kept that to yourself. We will have to talk at eight o'clock.
Oh. So where we are currently. Um. Right now. Sorry, guys. I'm just really. Um.
It's probably just you approaching for.
Oh, that's right. Um. So where we are right now, we are actually. I'm going to the next thing which will be storage design. I'm finding a location. And, um. The build up. So. One of the. Uh. Parcels of land. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the neighborhood. Living. Right here. If you can get a chance. But it is, um. On Revert. Um. Right in between Poty and Hannon. So it's a parcel of land right there, right across from, um. Social Service.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we, um. Select that site. It would be a build up.
Oh.
Okay. So the other site would be in the actual Cherry Hill Shopping Center. Um. Um, and if so, it would be right there where the family doll is.
Oh.
Okay, so those are the two locations that we're currently looking at. Um, that's where we are, uh, we're just in the process of coming up with numbers, going pro forma, or whatever it looks like to actually have the money, um, build, design, um, just the overall running of the actual one, okay? Yeah.
So, um, I work on the, uh, finance committee with Brother Tajee in the back, who's, uh, eat, nevermind, I apologize, don't look at me eating real hard right now. Uh, you chewing on your foot? Uh, no, but I'm just joking, bro. Um, so we've been working like extremely hard to, uh, try to broker and establish relationships with the, uh, two different entities that operate in two spots. Um, one of them is, uh, you don't have to do that. One, one of them is, uh, Catholic Charities who owns the Cherry Hill, uh, shopping center. Or as, as those who might be new to Cherry Hill would say, the Cherry Hill Town Center, we just call it the shopping center. Uh, it, and so for us, um, we're in conversation, there is a, a huge possibility that we go there, but of course, in any location, uh, in such as a development like that, we need to come with a business plan and so forth, and some cash in hand, we're still working on that, we're still working on, uh, you know, fundraising. Um, if there's opportunity later, I can share, or should have shared it. Um, so we're waiting to hear from, uh, I don't know if folks are tapped into what's happening across the city right now. There has been some money that comes from the federal government through what they call ARPA funds. ARPA stands for American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and these, there's about a lot of money that came to the city. We applied for about seven point five million dollars to help us, uh, advance the, the grocery store effort and the urban agriculture effort. And folks would know that Black Hill Institute as the organization, I won't take any shine off of the food co-op, which we're helping to anchor. But, uh, we were displaced from the land where we were working, we haven't stopped. However, we, uh, y'all getting a little bit off the cutting edge because y'all don't know as much, but I'll just share this. We have land in the Mount Clare community that we're developing and will be putting money there. But most of that seven point five million, would, if we were able to get it, would go, uh, no, when we get it. I ain't want to preach on this Wednesday evening, but, uh, since it started, no, I'm joking, but, uh. No, but, um, so we're waiting to hear, if we're able to do that, that would fund any of the locations. So I just wanted to give that as a backdrop for where we are considering, of course, there are other opportunities for financing the effort, which is probably going to cost us somewhere between three point five and five million dollars. We just, the way, the reason why we have that range is because we don't know which site and which size store we're talking about. Um, so that's the one site, at the shopping center. The other site, at Rebert, that Sister Kiana was talking about, we're in negotiation or in talks right now with Baltimore City Rexon Park. And Baltimore City Rexon Park is the, the managing agency that, uh, operates or that manages that land that's owned by the city and, uh, city council, well, by the mayor and city council. Our, uh, goal with that is to be able to get Baltimore City Rexon Parks to say yes, and hopefully eventually, uh, to allow us to own that space, and if not, to lease it for a long term, as long as they legally can. Uh, and so when Sister Kiana talks about, it depends on what, like, the size, the buildup and all of that. We don't know because we haven't gotten yeses from either of those agencies. But of course, what, uh, what would allow for a yes is getting closer to business plan and having cash in hand. Because every, I don't know about y'all, but I grew up in a time where there's a particular hip hop group that would say cash rules.
Everything around.
Praying, get the money. For those of you all.
Who don't know.
Who didn't grow up in the nineties.
Who don't know.
If you ain't grown up in the nineties, I would say this, uh, um, I'll put it another way. People make the world. Bow, either way, we, we working with people and we're trying to get money to move things in our favor. We're, we're closer than we have been in our efforts, we're just not there yet. So, I just wanted to share that and give context for what Sister Kiana's talking about. We're working hard to broker these relationships and leverage as much as we can to raise the money, to make this happen. Um, I promise you, we said this for three town halls, we are closer, I promise you, we are closer uh, than we've ever been to being able to say yes in either, either one of those spots. So, we're, uh, we're hopeful, however, without a yes, I don't want to be like, yo, we about to start building here because then if we don't start building, then you be like, you stood up there with that red hat on, thought you were something, and you was, and I don't want none of that smoke from nothing.
Good question, um, what is the politician supporting?
Yes, so, we, so we. So we have some support, we haven't reached out to the hospital directly. Sister Kiana's been working on building a relationship with Metcalfe Harbor Hospital. Um, but it's really around how we connect with, uh, patients and employees, and less about the land. And in terms of the, of elected officials, um, we haven't tapped them in yet. Only because we haven't needed to at this time, we're just connecting with the folks at the agency level. And at, uh, with, with Catholic charities, that's not a big push. They, they want to see Cherry Hill with a grocery store, so that would be a good idea. Okay, that's, it's debatable.
That's why I say that, uh, because Catholic, the shopping center is money. But Catholic charity is ma, is money. And looking at it in the long run, I'm trying to look ahead of that. If you look at it twenty years from now, after you have your business, your co-op and everything, then what happens when you can't afford that rent?
Yeah.
But if they give it to you from the city, and with the power didn't help, um, from there and there, only thing you be paying is ground rent.
Yeah.
So that's it, and plus you got support from the hospital, and you're surrounding areas that's over there, and everybody gonna solve, let be a part of.
So you, you're bringing up really good points that we've considered and things that we have to know, this is good. So we're gonna tap in with you when we get to that place. We've had, at this point in the last twelve months, um, four pretty, you know, big meetings with, uh, Department of, um, no, three, the fourth one's getting ready to come up, with the Department of, uh, of Rexon Park. And then we've had some just kind of, you know, touch and go conversations with Catholic charities. And we're not, because we don't have the cash in hand and because we're not like at a place where we've developed a business plan, of course, the business plan will be a participatory process just like this. We're not gonna be like, hey, here's the business plan. We want to hear from potential members, uh, stakeholders, residents, legacy members of Cherry Hill who don't live here anymore, all, all the people that we're interested in, and not only Cherry Hill, but, you know, across South Baltimore, when we do that part. But until then, we just kind of like, you know how it works. And I'm looking at you, but with, with everybody, it works like this, look, if, if I get you to remember who we are, it'll be easier when we're there, right? So that's where we are right now. And we're okay, or at least I would say that I'm okay with not having a yes right now. The fact that Baltimore City Rexon Parks are like, well, let us talk to legal to see if it's possible, what can we do? Um, we want to see y'all, in fact, the last meeting we had, Sister Kiana, you'll second me on this, uh, brother was, uh, he used this word, he says, we see what y'all doing, uh, we want to see black excellence in Cherry Hill. And I was like, whoa, this is the first time I ever seen, heard anybody say something like this in a meeting. And I'm like, we're getting closer and closer, I think people know what we're telling them to do, we're in a different place now.
I'm gonna say, if you go to Rebert and Cherry Hill Land, dude, all that whole corner is like fencing, nothing, they just see houses there. On Rebert and Cherry Hill Land, that big corner.
Yes.
And it'd just be a big corn village, they need, they need to talk down to it.
Uh, that, that's a, that's a little bit of a harder push, um, and the location may not be the best location.
Right, right.
However, I think what, what Sister Kiana was talking about with our pro forma, and the pro forma is just a financial tool to be able to, uh, assess what it might cost.
Right.
With different scenarios, you know, five thousand square foot space, seven thousand, ten thousand, how much it might cost to build that? And to, uh, you know, for the inventory and how much it might cost. Um, we looked at that location that we're talking about, that's, uh, in between the hospital and the new wellness center. And, uh, and the shopping center, uh, and the, the, um.
More, more traffic over there.
Yeah, it, it makes, it makes a lot more sense for those two.
People can see it.
Yeah, so in our, in our, um, in our town hall in October, we should be in a better place to let you all know. And of course, beforehand, if you're not, uh, connected to BYI's, uh, Black Hill Institute's, um, newsletter, uh, you should, this is where you can learn more about the food co-op's, uh, efforts, and then of course, we'll be putting out more communications as we go. But I just wanted to give more context, I apologize for taking too much time. But, uh, on the land piece, we literally, uh, like, we're, we're right there, seriously, we're, honestly, a business. Money getting paid is probably gonna give us a yes from any, any of those entities, so, we got options, Joe. We've, we gone away from just hypotheticals, we actually have real options right now. I'm not gonna talk about the politics behind any of the other stuff, that's not for the public space. When we start recording and you get me in the corner, I'll talk to you about that, uh, without your phone. But, in the meantime, uh, what I'm saying is, we got options. We got options, and I'm really excited, we really have two really solid options, and that puts us in the best place. We, we've been work, we have been working, I'm gonna be honest, we have been busting our tails. You'll hear about the bylaws later, and how long we've been busting our tails on the bylaws and all of that, but that, that'll come later. But, uh, Natalie, you got a question?
So, if you, if you go to a space for, if you go with another contract with the city, the city displaced you one time, what makes, what is, what is it that could make sure that if you do go to those spaces with the city, that even if you do sign a ten year lease, that they will decide to redevelop and displace you a second time?
Well, to be clear, the city did not displace us the first time. It was, uh, uh, it was HUD, it was Housing, Urban Development, H A B C, Housing Authority of Baltimore City. So that's number one, but your, your concern is still valid. What we're moving toward in this case, one, with the knowledge that that's the case. Uh, especially with, when I alluded, boy, I talked about the land that we are stewarding in Mount Clare right now. With that relationship, we were very clear about what we were able to do. We signed the contract, we understood what the, uh, dynamics were within that and the element, and, uh, working toward ownership there. That's the pathway that we would go, and if not, working as hard as we can to, uh, go within the legal, um, parameters, because the city has to follow by what they have, like, if they could give us a ninety nine year lease, they would, but I don't know that they can. So that's where, where it is now, they need to learn from their legal department what they actually can do. And then with that, to maximize that, and in the meantime, try our hand at, uh, owning the space to have the deed of be transferred over to either the co-op itself, or Black Hill Institute, whatever we broker or whatever. And, uh, and in that, in that case, just making sure that we protect ourselves because we have, um, we had the experience, you know what I'm saying? It's like, you know, fool me once, shame on. I, I'm, I'm gonna go in and, I, I'm, I'll come from the Black Baptist tradition, I'm gonna go in and back up, and we gonna bring this into a call and response, fool me once, shame on me, fool me twice. They ain't gonna fool us again. You see what I'm saying? That's all I'm gonna say. When we turn the, uh, the record off, you get me in the corner without your phone and signing the N D A, we'll tell you. No, but I think, I think that that's where we are now, uh, we learned a lot from that situation. What we want to do again legally and all of that, we know where our leverage points are. Yeah. But that is a great question, I appreciate you bringing that up. Sorry about that. I just wanted y'all to hear that, really, we are closer than we ever have been now, like, real stuff. We went from starting off with people not saying the words, but really being like, grocery store? What was the energy now being like, well, what can we do? We, we've, we've done a lot of work to, to, uh, get us to a place where people take us seriously now.
And we really gonna need all that, because you know they talking about fat with dollar might be leaving us six months.
Yeah, so, I didn't want, those were the politics I didn't want to say, but since you brought it out. I think that they want us there, is what I'm saying. I think we're in a good place, and I think Catholic charities want us there, and because of that reality that you said, I ain't saying, um, we might have a better situation to, uh, to, to be there, so. We, we in a good place, seriously, we in a very good place, very, very good.
So thank you for the questions, thank you for the answer for. And we had us, um, Laurie, dealing with Rexon Parks can be difficult, do you have any support from SB seven for this? The size of the store might depend on your scope, do you want to serve other South Baltimore food deserts, um, desert communities?
Rexon Port, Rexon Park supports real food farm at Clifton Park, so there should be wiggle room.
Yes. Um, thank you for that question. Um, you can.
Um, so Laurie, thank you for your question, I'll just very quickly say yes. Uh, we are in a, um, we are, so for those who may not have seen the question, it was more about like, just working with Rexon Parks and it being difficult, oh, yep, nevermind, right there. Uh, um, we have not connected with SB seven, we haven't felt the need to do any outside support or what have you. Uh, our direct connection with the city, actually as a result of the displacement from the land that we were on, didn't, you know, they actually came to support, it, it wasn't from the beginning, it was a supportive situation. The fact that, you know, we're, we, uh, are stewarding land in Mount Clare was literally because of the mayor's orders saying, hey, housing, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development, which is the city agency, not to be confused with Housing Authority of Baltimore City, a federal agency or quasi, you know, uh, agency. Um, they were like, we about to help you because the mayor said, we need to help you. So we haven't felt like we needed to take that position, however, we will be ready if that time comes. So, uh, I think we're in a good place, uh, in terms of that. Uh, and yes, I think that there's a lot of wiggle room and there's a lot of support, so, yeah.
Thank you so much. But I wanted to share, because there's, just to respect everyone's time, um, it's seven forty three, y'all been up there? So I wanted to show, we're working with N D C to do an external rendering, she just basically put the outside of the actual, uh, food co-op to look like, so I just want to kind of show, take some time to show, um, some of the ideas that they sent over in the PowerPoint. N D C. Oh, Neighborhood Design Center, sorry, Neighborhood Design Center, so what they do is, um, it's like volunteer, the things of that nature, different architects are kind of work with design. Um, that works with, uh, food communities to, um, get the external regulatory that we can get, just and look at you. So, you can kind of just, we'll have to go to the.
Okay.
Okay, so, can you guys see that? So this is an example of just different, um, co-ops, um, just, just like an idea, which is why when we hit the buildup, you know, you think about not just like the market itself, you think about the outsides, the trees, you know, think about the weather. Um, you just want to think about all the different things that kind of come with what you want your, um, community to look like, what you want. So, that was the idea behind the buildup, because it's not just specific, although this is about the, um, Cherry Hill Food Cooperative, but it's also important for us to think outside of that. Um, we go to another. So these are some other options, um, I don't know if you guys, I can't think of the name at this moment, but it is a market where they actually grow food on the top of your. So, you know, just the, the thought of like being in Cherry Hill, having that, like yourself could be right on the top, you know, just really opening our minds to what it could be, and also really respecting the fact that we deserve these things. You know, we deserve to have that space that's for us, and it's really to keep our nutrition really just, it's homegrown.
Well.
So, just keeping that in mind, um, even the air is, you know, really think about it in your mind, um, it should be like one, one more. Okay, so this is another design, um, same idea, just, you know, just say what we deserve, you know. Sometimes in Baltimore City, we don't really see markets that kind of speak to that, that glory, I guess you would say. So, these are options, of course, when we get into it, it's really about money, you gotta keep that in mind. It's not that it can't be done, but it's just really about what is the community willing to do to bring it to. So this will be the inside, we're not quite there yet, but this is just the idea of what it would look like when it designed the inside. Okay, so, um, this is also another option, um, so I just wanted to kind of put that there, put that in our minds of just where we are. This is the process, this is where we, where we've gotten so far from all the work, all the hard work that's been done. And I had to say, Annika is also a town committee. We all here.
And, and I'll just say, we'll be able to do our own specific renderings, once we choose a site.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, and that'll be, come through community charrettes, everybody will have an opportunity to do that theoretically, unless y'all just came here for the food and y'all not coming back the next time, um, other people would do it, uh, so.
And also, we will be having, um, events that will involve, so obviously y'all get that information. Um, so that's definitely, it won't just be the town hall, actually, okay? So I just want to make sure I put that out there, um, and, that's it. So one of the things that, um, I wanted to show is, we are, uh, we actually work with, um, Gem City. So Gem City Cooperative is in Dayton, Ohio, kind of similar to like Cherry Hill, um, not having a grocery store and almost, um, I wouldn't say for that, it's almost thirty, unfortunately, but it's been a while, the community kind of came together, brought in, um, supervisors together, they did a lot of, um, community meetings, getting things together from the community, what they wanted to see in their market, um, and really getting people involved, so. I wanted to show just a small clip of their actual opening day, um, just so you can see that we're actually working with, uh, other co-ops who actually have done this, this is not some far out of our imagination thing, this is something that really is and can have. So, um.
Yeah, um, so I guess if it's curious, like, once the market is here, like, how will that affect like property values? And, is it, not, not to create like, you know how we had this development, basically, um, property values are up, so sometimes we just keep it short. And, or, so I was just wondering, like, is there a community?
So I think the short answer is, we can't control for that, number one. I know it's gonna increase property values. However, it's not gonna increase property values. However, it's not gonna increase property values as one amenity. Uh, folks should understand, there is a a copy of it outside, there is a Cherry Hill redevelopment plan, uh what what is called, uh, what's it called?
Cherry Hill Transformation?
Yes, Transform Cherry Hill. So Transform Cherry Hill is a a plan that was developed in twenty nineteen through a series of community conversations. Uh, the grocery store was a part of that as as an effort, particularly a food co-op. I'm saying that to say, in develop, in the process of developing or redeveloping Cherry Hill from a community-based standpoint, you're not gonna be able to property values going up and the possibility of displacement is always the case. I mean, it's like, it's always possible. How we buffer against that, I think organizations like Cherry Hill Development Corporation and others, Cherry Hill Strong and other organizations are working with people in like building their credit, uh working on uh establishing um skills, resources necessary to own homes as those trends happen. And that's like the best that we can say, and we, of course, we are tapped in and connected to it. Uh, however, you know, it's it's a community effort, not just a co-op's effort.
I appreciate that, I mean, I know we.
True.
Just because transparency, I would hate for something to take place again, the people that are here don't get the benefit.
Sure. Sure.
That's not okay.
No, it's not.
I agree, I was actually in a meeting last night, um really quickly, the Charm City Circular. They're actually um making some transformations for the next eighteen to eighteen, to bring a bus line here. And um one of the questions that I asked them, they actually never asked me. But was just, what is the benefit of it for Cherry Hill Land, like why, man? Um, and one of the things that I'm learning just in my overall life, typically with my, I used to take the urban class in Morgan. And a lot of changes that we hear about now were planned on ten years ago. So, it's like, it's it's new to us, to some of us, but the idea is for us to really get the education and then like, you know, community that was coming up so that we can kinda conduct these things. Even like cute terms like food desert, a desert is designed to be, it's designed to be, you know, it's not a such thing. It's a cute term, but it's really food apartheid, and we're clear, cause somebody on that meeting was from Westboro. And they said, well, why is you guys not doing anything, any bus lines to come out here, we never get them. The response was politically correct. We haven't even had a chance to look at that yet, but if that, if the option comes up, we definitely look at it, which means we don't want that area yet. So we're not gonna look into it. So, you know, that's why we at Black Yale have um political education. Um, and we do that just so we can really be educated on strategic planning, planning around these issues. And um the food sushi initiative, which is the food co-op came out of it as a part of combatting that, so um we just, yes.
So if I just add one particular reminder, we don't, like, this whole thing is not happening, it's not happening, there are groups of specifically working on permanent affordability with our whole community input. And that's something that other co-ops in other cities have done, they have, because they're cooperative, so they're connected to them. Real things, I think, yes, other things, and so as long as the members of this co-op are innocent, connected to this, that's it. There is an opportunity for the benefits of the cooperative, the benefit of actually, it's in particular for a really long time, because the co-op is nothing like the community.
For sure, thank you, and we got about four minutes? Yes. Uh, we got about four minutes. Um, also wanted, before we show the video, please, if you are interested in a town committee or being an ambassador, um it is two tiers for the ambassador, you only get like a yard sign, you get our information, that's also optional, you got one like reach your feet in the community.
Reach your feet, that's not DC. I mean, I love DC, but don't do that.
But, you know, we do have that option. So, um, just making sure that we just know that we have those options, we need to still connect with you, um, to get the political application, whatever strategy, I don't understand. Just to be more effective overall in your life and in the community. So I'm gonna show this video, um, just so you guys can see.
Planning and preparing the Gem City Market is finally open. It's a project community members in Dayton took into their own hands after a public health meeting back in twenty fifteen. And Two News reporter Lee Williamson is live at the market with how far we've come since that day.
As you can hear from the music behind me, there's a lot of excitement around the grand opening of the Gem City Market. That's because it's not your average grocery store. As a grocery co-op, it belongs to the entire community and everyone's reminded of that when they walk into the doors.
Welcome to your grocery store!
With forty-three hundred member owners, the Gem City Market opened Wednesday as a store owned and operated by the community.
It's it's ours, you know, we all have a part in this.
The member owners pay a one-time fee to keep the store up and running. Located in a food desert in the West Dayton area, the focus is on bringing fresh, quality food to those who need it most.
About broccoli, peppers, and avocado. I I'm trying to eat healthy.
Being in a food desert, it's it's so limited to have fresh fruits and vegetables.
But shopping is not limited to just food, there is a community kitchen where people can learn more about taking care of their health and wellness.
My goal is to to have our participants take the fresh fruits and vegetables and fabricate them into healthy meals.
And the store also promotes local businesses like Third Perk Coffee House and provides jobs.
Over eighty percent of our staff live directly around the market in the trade area, which is beautiful.
The for us, buy us approach to the market is one of the first models of its kind in the country.
That we can build and have our own, and keep our own, you know what I'm saying? And I said, this is the first of many to come.
It's important to remember, you do not have to be a member to shop here, it's open to everyone in the community and beyond. A warning in Dayton, Aaliyah Williamson, Two News, working for you.
All righty.
Do you?
All right, y'all, hey, look, I got the task, if y'all don't mind, of of just exciting us. Y'all see what's happening in Dayton, Ohio?
Right.
Dayton, Ohio is a hot skip and a jump away. Gem City Market, the organizers from there helped to train us. They helped to train us, all right? So I'm gonna say some things, and I want you to say, in South Baltimore, all right? What they got in Dayton, we gonna have. All right, we got, we just got started, I like that. What they got in Dayton, we gonna have in all right, I like that. We gonna have a food co-op. We gonna have jobs. Ownership. Healthy and fresh food. We gonna have Cherry Hill Food Co-op.
In South Baltimore.
For us, by us, doing what we do, not waiting for nobody else, right here in
South Baltimore.
Keep the flame.
We gonna keep the flame, right here in South Baltimore, y'all. That's real, I ain't playing.
Real, real.
We ain't using cute words, it's real. That's where we at, I just wanna make sure that y'all understand that we ain't had this meeting in vain. We ain't been working since twenty seventeen in vain. We ain't bring you out on a Wednesday evening when you could be watching your shows, doing homework, doing something else, vacuuming your floors, watching uh Euphoria, whatever you doing. Whatever you doing, shopping on Amazon, whatever you doing. But we haven't done this in vain, and when we come in October, we'll be able to share some progress with y'all. And I just want, just thank you, while I know we're nearing the end, I just wanna thank you because um, you know, for your time and your energy and your space. And uh and just thank you in advance while I continue to work together uh on in the ambassador program and elsewhere. And uh, you want me to? You you got it, you got it? I want y'all to go in your bag, we got a prop to announce that I'm really excited about. For those of you all who are not familiar with Black Yale Institute, you should understand that Black Yale Institute is an organization that's anchoring this work here with the Cherry Hill Food Co-op. And I say anchor, and I use that proudly. Sometimes anchor institutions come in because they big and they got a lot of money. We ain't got a lot of money. We got a lot of passion and we give a kitty about our people, we give a kitty about the work that we do and about where we going. And because of that, one of the things that we've been working on since twenty seventeen is establishing a a co-op with us. And one thing that you should know about Black Yale Institute is that our thing to remind us to keep our work going, to remind us that we stand on the shoulders of people like Mama Betty and her mama who who passed on, but who who done this work, who continue to do this work, who've been fighting for freedom for black people for for centuries, is we say, keep the flame. And so in the tradition of of call and response, some of y'all wanna talk before somebody else. Some of y'all wanna lag on, some of y'all wanna learn rhythm tonight. Call and response, I'm gonna say something, then you gonna say it. And you gonna say it how I say it. So if I say it low and quiet, I want you to do that. If I say it, if I scream it loud, I want you to do that. Can y'all hear me on the uh on the virtual? Can't see?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that's what I'm talking about, so, here we go. Our mantra is keep the flame. We wanna remind ourselves that we gonna keep going. There's more to be done, and so and there's more fire that's gonna need, that's gonna be needed for us to keep it going. So we remind ourselves by keeping the flame. When we look at ourselves in the morning, in the uh mirror in the morning, when we when we tired and there's more work to be done. When we taking twelve-plus months to figure out how to get some bylaws drafted together so that we can incorporate this mamajama. Y'all like that, I'm trying not to cut here, but this mamajama, that's the only word that came in. This mamajama, and we gotta remind ourselves to keep the flame, all right? So I want you to take this with you, I want you to remember this, and I want you to remember this mantra. We gonna do it like this, keep the flame! Keep the flame!
Keep the flame.
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 Till and after we establish a co-op, we gonna continue to keep the flame.
And so, and when?
When to do? I'm gonna do.
No, thank you.
Amen.
It's also, it should be a bay that has like a um, a seed you can ask for in their work. Um, it's some information, it's a confirmation in there about food apartheid, it's some information there about Black Yale Institute, it's stickers in there, some nice fun good things for you guys, and until next time, keep the flame.
Let's show some love for Sister Kiana.
And Sister Paula. All the way, all the way to yourself, respect for yourself. Let's keep talking for your momma and your婆婆 and your grandbabies and your aunties and for those who want to come with us.
Okay, y'all. And we gonna turn the music back on, and I'm for real this time, y'all better dance.